One, fireheads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and grace, and we ask for wisdom and understanding as we go through this council member meeting and help us make the right decisions. Please be with those who are lost, and in your son's holy name we pray, amen. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Apparently this is an extension office, so we'll try to talk. Can you go get those?
I will. They'll be here in the morning, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You got food in my head, I don't know.
Okay, I guess you all have a copy or received a copy of the last council meeting's minutes, your motion to approve. Second, review of the second. Any discussion? All the papers say aye. Any opposed?
I have to sign for my last.
All right, my report. Jonathan is going to get our flags back. We'll have him by the next meeting.
You'll have him by the morning.
I want to talk about the interconnect project. Interconnect project one, or the interconnect one, I'm pretty sure construction is complete, the testing and what have you is underway. I think the first test has turned out good. I think, it's my understanding, they're hoping to cut that over by the end of this week. And when we get that cut over, I guess we'll make sure it works and then tank water will be taken out of service. They, they're working on interconnect two, which will supply our tank two. The interconnect one will use their tank for our water pressure. For our connect two, we'll be using our tank, and we're going to use Jackson County water to fill our tank. And we're going to do that for a few weeks, just to make sure it works and we can meter it all right and that sort of thing. But then, we're going to, at least during the day, make our own water with our own plants. Because right now, with our leaky system, particularly with the meters, it will cost us more to buy water from Jackson County than we can make it on our own. So at least in the short time, short term, until we can get the new meters installed, which is in the works, we just have to get the audits complete. We will be using our water plant still to fill tank two for the time being.
You're saying with this tank, the rates?
In and of itself, I don't think so. I guess there's a lot of variables involved, and that's what I've told the county water. First thing is get the thing cut over and see how much we're building, which I have a pretty good idea. The second thing, the big thing, is to see how much these meters are going to save us. I talked to the contractor last week, and he had done a lot of testing with older meters. He said the best meter he found, the older type meters, only bill for 70% of the water that passed through them. Most of them only meter 50% or less. So we could be not losing a lot of water leakage, it could just be bad meter. So we're hoping, we'll know more once we get these meters replaced. And again, that takes us back to the audits. We've got, they've received everything. We've given them everything they've asked for, and the ball's in their court, we know they're working on them. The last estimate was the end of this month, I think. So, I promise, the ball's in their court, they are working on it, but we just don't have it yet.
They put your chair, when, when this?
That's what this, well, they told us they'd have it done by April 15th. So they keep, yeah, so they're, they keep pushing it back, but I believe they're working on it. Marla's talked to them, I think Danielle's been talking to them, so it's, they're working on it.
Yeah, we're good.
Yep, I think they have. I talked, I did receive an email from an army corps of engineers, they have received a request to do a review of all their creeks, from the three flood dams all the way down to any creek. I'm not real sure what the next step is, I need to ask her, but I think at least we're on the list and we're in line to have them come and look. And I'll try to get more on that at the next meeting. I've asked for a couple of policy changes. The first one is vacation and sick time. I've been employed for 41 years, and the last 30 of those, we did not have separate vacation and sick time. It was all just personal time off, PTO time. And I think that's pretty much the norm now. And it's a lot easier to manage, I think, you don't have to worry about specific excuses and following up with that, it's, you're either offered or not, and that's just maintained. Earning the time, there's really no change, they'll earn the same time, same amount of time that they're earning off. The only potential change would be paying out to employees, and we will only pay out up to 960 hours if they have that much, but that's the maximum we'll pay out. If they have more than that, they just lose it when they quit working. So that is a little bit more conservative than what we've had in the past. Anything else, Danielle?
Not on that one, I don't think.
Okay, you have a copy of that revised municipal order? So if you all are okay with that, I'd like the motion to approve.
Well, I agree, so I'll make my approval.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Here it is, done. All the papers say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. The other is the health insurance. And by the way, these two things, we have a summary of what all the other, a lot of the other cities are doing in Kentucky, and especially our size, population of 1,000 or less. And so, I looked about the PO, a PTO policy, that's completely the norm, I think more people do that than not. And these changes we want to make to the health insurance is right in line with what other cities do of our size. So what we're going to do, or would like to do with your permission, is right now the city supplies health insurance for the employee, but nothing for their family. And that, I think, is a real problem, and we're looking for people to hire. A lot of other companies have that benefit, that their families can be covered. So that employees will have a skin in the game, and they'll cover their families, but we'll ask the employee to contribute 25% of their cost to the plan, and if they choose that, then the city will pick up 75% of the family coverage. Now initially, we think the impact to our budget will be less than $5,000 if you have that, and we just don't have the people, excuse me, to, that would have a family plan or a spouse to get or whatever. So I think right now it would be limited to very few people. And so you have a copy of that, or municipal order to change your policy. So, anybody would like to make a motion?
Well, I have a question, sir.
Okay.
Could we be cooking that?
Well, I think I need a motion before we go on to questions.
Well, now, can the city, can they pay the 75%?
Can I get a motion first, and then we can discuss?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, got a motion, and a second? Second, okay. Now we can discuss, what are your questions?
Can, how did I phrase that before? Yeah. Can we get that help in court if that's on the court?
Well, here's the problem with that.
Probably not.
No? If we insured the council, that would double the most expensive expense we have. In other words, we have nine employees, I think we have eight or nine, and so we would add six to that. And that would, that would add a tremendous expense to our coverage. Now, one thing I want to do, and it's a policy, we didn't change it this time, did we?
No, because it's an ordinance amendment.
Right, okay. We are going to do an ordinance amendment, there is a provision in the ordinance to cover the mayor's health insurance. But apparently, in order to offer it to the mayor, you have to offer it to all elected officials. So I'm not taking it, and I don't think, I worry that somebody would run for mayor just to get the health insurance. And I don't think that's right, that people are running just to get health insurance. So I'm going to ask that we amend that, so that the mayor is not off of coverage either. It's, it's either all of us or none of us, and I would rather that we go with none, and that will really help the city's budget, otherwise it's really going to hurt the budget. But we don't have that. Hold on, one more.
I don't need it, I don't need it, so I'll get it.
Jewel, on your question about the budget, we did fit it, that expense into this budget, but the way that this policy is written, you, each year you guys get to decide whether or not the city can afford it, so you're not obligating yourselves to pay for it from here until the end of time, it'll be something that you look at each year if it can fit into the budget. Does that make sense?
Well, the word, now, who wants to vote for employees to get it? But we will without.
Pardon me?
We'll be without.
Yeah. Well, you're an elected official, you're not an employee.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, there's a motion on the board to approve the change in health insurance. A motion's been made, so all the papers say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let me go on from there. Personnel policies. Okay, now we got, we're up to the budget. A few things I want to say about the budget, and it's my understanding, this is early, we're supposed to have it done by the end of June 30th, so I think we'll have it done this year on time. Me, and Paul is one of the earliest the budget's been ready. So I want to thank Marla, Danielle for putting a lot of work into this, putting up with me to want to change things. This budget, bottom line, is quite a bit higher than it was last year, and a great majority of the reason for that is last year's budget was based on only nine months of expenses and revenue. So it was about three-fourths of the budget that was necessary. Some of these ticket items, like how the money we receive on occupational packs, occupational packs, insurance premium fees, and ABC licensing rules, and all the lectures on that. But all of these things were already at 100% of what we budgeted this revenue, so this next three months are like ready. So that's basically the example, or the reasoning behind a lot of these bigger numbers, is because we based our last year's budget on that. That's one of the big revenue items, and also on revenue, water and sewer. Same situation, water and sewer in town, we're already getting there, 100%. Water revenue at the end of March was at 99.83% of what we budgeted, so we still have three months of water revenue. So we expect water revenue to go up significantly because of that, because of one major account that we expect to collect on all year, that we have been collecting on for over a year, and begin the process of installing these new meters, and we think we'll be able to meter more of the water that's going through the meters. And one of our bigger expenses we're adding to the water expense is buying water from Jackson County water. There'll be some additional expenses in the sewer as well, as we begin to repair and update the sewer plant. Depending on how much that costs, we're more than likely we'll get a grant to completely overhaul the sewer plant. But the key there is we're able to rehab the existing plant.
Sure, it's not, you might have it, it's small.
Right, right. Let's see. Oh, we'll also this year receive, I've called it back pay, but it's things like licensing pay, state rotate, the expense on the turn lane up here, all that money's been held up by DLG, and it's our assumption that once we get our completed audits to them, all that money comes to us. So that'll be essentially reverse us for the things we've already paid out. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, and code like, we need to break that.
Yes, it does. We expect to feel seen in there, there's about $80,000 or $90,000 for that. Are you talking about Yellow Dog, you're right?
Yeah.
Yeah, true, but that may be taken, I haven't looked at interconnect, it's a different shape. Yeah. And you did see where we took care of Fox Hall. So, be patient, I tell you, we'll take care of Yellow Dog, you just have to be patient. Is there anything else I want to talk? Well, again, I said we'll receive some money that'll be ready to pay out. I think I mentioned every thing that I wanted to about the budget. So you want to take it away, Danielle, or last summer asked at all that needs to be summer asked? Oh, you got a brief to talk.
I did. Last day of coffee. This is an ordinance adopting the City of Key Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, whereas annual budget proposals and messages are prepared to deliver to the legislative body, whereas legislative bodies review such budget for causal and bad modifications, now therefore be ordained by the City Council of Key as follows. Section 1, the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2024, is adopted as set forth herein. Your total expected resources available for general fund is roughly $1 million for water and $5,997,000-ish. Sewer fund is $260,000, and then the sewer system upgrade project still has $306,000 in it. Section 2, this budget ordinance shall be administered by the executive authorities prescribed and set forth by, in the Kentucky revised statutes, administration shall include, but not be limited to, at least the following preparation, submission of financial statements, which include budgetary comparisons on not less than quarterly basis, provided for budget amendments if requested by the legislative body, or if anticipated through administration and implementation. Prepare any financial statements required for publication purposes pursuant to KRS 424 and KRS 91A, because each month of this budget to be audited is prescribed and filed on section 3 of detailed operating budget is adopted by reference to administration accounting and reporting purposes. And your first budget reading.
Okay, so that's all we have to do on that?
Yep.
Unless anybody asks a question. For me? Okay, we'll go on to citizen comments. Does anybody sign up for citizen comments? None? So any council comments or questions?
What they do is they far have made a crazy room for operator, Danny, they don't like far apart.
Yeah, that's on my list to check on. It's my understanding, once they've been used, you can't use it again. And so, but what we do with them, I'm not real sure. If it's based on weight and you give money for it, we hopefully could get a lot of money for it, but I don't know if you can, it may just be something. I suppose so.
Yeah. But Dickie was talking about getting things cleaned, uh, around, so that's what we need to get some of those, you know, and.
Do you all know about disposal of fire hydrants and layoffs and all the stuff?
I know that we, I know that we have, you all have voted a surplus, a bunch of like the scrap meters that we had for junk. I have always gotten mixed stories about how to dispose of fire hydrants, so we'll check into that to see what we need to do on it.
Cash on, I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else?
Do you have a chance to look at that place on Main Street?
I did.
Where the bank's coming off?
Well, I drove through, it'll take somebody smarter than me, obviously, to me, but it, it looked normal, but somebody may, are you talking about where it was repaired?
No, where it slid.
Okay, there's a different place other than, okay.
If you go up through McKee, that'd be the first race, second race, yeah.
You're going from?
If you go through McKee, on McKee.
So coming from this way, if you went up this way, you didn't last last.
Which Sandy's place, you know where it come out? Where they repaired that, they lacquered it, they filled all that in.
Yeah.
Gordon filled, spiced the tile, all that. They didn't do the bank, and now the bank has slid.
So we are talking about that, where the new, where the repair was though? It's just above the repair?
Above the.
You can drive down there and see it.
Okay, well now that I don't have to look for it.
Yeah, there's a big, anyway, they just broke mine, and that's why I had it.
Well, it hasn't been mine too, hadn't it?
I was just curious about that, about if it is the city's place, about repair, or to go back in our fee sheet.
Well, I'll have to find out about that. Does anybody else, do you all know anything about that?
What I've seen that it's slid, I've seen a little dirt, and it looked like it would have been on the property owner more than it would have been the city.
The city was supposed to put the gravel on the bank to cut that from that.
Well.
Yeah, and it wouldn't, it didn't happen.
That's supposed to be known, or.
That's what I'm saying, that's what they said to me.
Well, we'll look at it again. I'll look at it, but obviously it'll take somebody smarter than me to determine if there isn't.
And it's the city or the person.
Right.
Well, they should be there, they understand, back, they might want, they would get that thing.
Or which, like, which road, like that road?
Yeah, like down, well, they, they're trying to put a dead.
I don't know if we got dead ends signs or not, I know you got some one-way, one-way signs, but that's the last one.
One-way, yes, one-way. But they didn't.
Was that road that had one-way?
You all repealed the ordinance that made it one-way.
They changed the.
Is that Third Street you're talking about?
I thought it was that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a one-way street anymore, you all repealed that.
But here's, that came up, so, I think it was before I was on the council, but obviously Dickie and I lived there, and I've sat on the back porch and kind of laughed if people think they're really going to stop people from going down Third Street.
Exactly, I won't see that as.
There's as much traffic that comes down Third Street as comes down A and N, so, and why people do that, don't ask me, but there is a lot of traffic that goes through.
That's why, yeah, no street there. What's the word?
Yeah.
All right, so the one-way signs, dead-end signs are dead issue, is that right?
A dead issue, that's what.
Don't even worry.
Yeah.
And did, did you transfer employees' card that you probably talked about?
Oh, yes, we have a new employee, and I'm trying to remember his name, Ken?
Caleb.
Caleb, 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 what's his last name?
Spence.
Caleb Spence, he is here, and I think he's helped us get through a lot of things already. So Caleb Spence. And is the other one?
Starts tomorrow.
Okay, and the, the other administrative assistant starts tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so yeah, it's really helping us, and I think Caleb, I sure stepped that wrong. He's actually gathered the data for these vehicles out here to get them on go deals, so that should be coming up pretty soon.
I don't know, I seen one on the road back there, it's blown to be white, I forgot my thoughts. Yeah, they're all the hitters.
Haley has, where do we stand on the interlocal agreement with the county?
And then all that stuff that we had talked about after the last meeting, we're still waiting on DLG approval, they've sent it back, they sent it back before we added that in, and then we sent it back to them with the information.
Okay, did they make any changes?
A few, but not like, not super, not super significant now.
Hey, we, are we going to fill round, drag in, bush out?
Yes, do you know, I noticed Bubba started on that, does anybody know if he's?
He didn't, he didn't.
He's not going to leave, so.
I think he started, I think it rang him out when he was working on it. And then we had, we had a few other priority projects, we had a water leak he had to fix, so he's got to, he's got to get back to it on the drive.
It is definitely on the list, and it's a priority, it's in progress.
So we have to do something along with the track, we have to have a tractor there.
We don't know, we'll have to, yeah, contract, and I feel like when that track gets leveled out, mowing may not be as critical, there'll be a lot of dirt there, but we do need to sow grass on the mountain, man-made mountain.
Man-made mountain.
I agree.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Took my duck on the way home.
Well, there's one I'm trying to say, but they deny, and I have seen many ducks on there. Anything else?
Oh, did we get a police report on town?
Oh, I'm so sorry, it wasn't on the.
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So since the last time we met, it's just kind of been a quick rundown. We had, we had 325 cat entries, and that's just everything all combined together. It breaks down a little bit, we opened 17 cases, we made 25 arrests, placed 58 charges, worked eight recs, and we assisted various police agencies 46 times, and charges are everything from warrants to drugs to alcohol intoxication. And the charges are everything from warrants to drugs to alcohol intoxication, burglaries, child lifting, so it's just the gamut. It's summertime, so we start to pick up, get a little bit busier. We're seeing more calls, we're seeing more activity. And we're just closing along best we can.
Can you tell us, do you know how many of the charges are felony charges?
Off the top of my head, no, but I'm gonna say of fifty-eight charges, probably twenty-eight to thirty-three are gonna be felony charges. We had a lot of drug charges, so.
More for me?
I must have more, Mr. Mayor.
Jewel, I didn't know you were such a bad boy.
This budget, incidentally, and I should have mentioned it, will hire us a new, an additional police officer.
Oh, wow.
At least it's in the budget to do so.
Well, I know the little guy's friggin', so.
We're very, very happy to talk about.
I'll give him a shout-out, 'cause he is. I see him all day.
Well, he, I saw him at work. We had a front row seat.
You got a front row seat?
Made him a rest.
I seen him with a front row seat, and he was getting on, he carried that truck before, he got on, and I was like, oh my god.
We saw that one, too. They're hard to...
No, that actually wasn't him.
Oh, that wasn't you in that bag?
That was Sheriff's Department.
I was just a few.
No, that wasn't him. That was, that was the sheriff's department.
But I didn't see you, because that's good.
Any questions? Or any, y'all have any concerns?
Is the Mexican restaurant doing okay?
Seems to be. We eat there a couple times a week, so.
I mean, I'm talking about with the alcohol.
We won't know anything from them for probably another two months.
Oh, okay.
And even when you start talking about restaurants, and Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, where they get credited for the license that they buy, their, the revenue that they will bring in and the regulatory fee is usually very minimal.
Is the revenue of this here, is it around about the same?
The, our alcohol revenue?
It's, it's up just a little bit.
Just, I mean, just a smidgen.
It don't bury too much.
No, it usually stays pretty, you can just about call where, within a few hundred dollars, who's gonna have what in regulatory fees from month to month.
But it does support the police department.
Yes, all the money has to be run through the police department. And so how we do that is we take a percentage of our calls that are alcohol-related. We're required to keep record. And that's a very broad term. For example, every time I walk into Shell, it's alcohol-related call. I'm checking the area, there's alcohol there. If I'm out here on a burglar complaint and there's a crushed beer can on the ground, that's an alcohol complaint, because there's alcohol present. Even though it's not necessarily what you would consider an alcohol incident, it's just alcohol's present. So you take that percentage of how many calls you have versus how, how many are alcohol-related, you can use that percentage into what you do as far as vehicles, uniforms, pay, and then we reimburse the general fund with that money.
Does Mr. Ball want to have an academy W?
Not yet. Hopefully, we're hopeful, and I should know something by this week for late September or first October.
We hope to have our new officer up and ready to go by the end.
Are you looking at anybody yet on the new officer?
We got some people that were from our last process. The Sheriff's Department just concluded the process, and what Sheriff Isaacs and I have done, whenever we have a process, we kind of run it together, we do it together. So that way I was involved in his entire process from start, initial meeting and greet, their PT test, to their oral board, all the way down to when they selected someone. So some of those people, we'll, obviously we'll, we'll announce it, and people will be allowed to apply. And we'll start our own process. We've already got a pretty good idea of who's gonna apply, as it stands right now. Now, there could be somebody that comes in. I, I know for a fact there's a couple from Madison County EMF that are interested in law enforcement, and they, has talked to me a couple times about it. So we've got a couple people that live in the county. One of them works out in the county, one of them works in the county. They're very interested. They were in Danielle's process, so I've got a pretty good handle on them.
All right, anything else?
I have you, I'm not that patient for water treatment.
We had to, you made a lot of decisions, so we've had to re-advertise. At this point, we're gonna accept a class one operator or anybody that's interested in being an operator that has some sort of, but...
How many, they didn't need to find?
Was there?
Two.
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 There was two last time, and we haven't had any this time.
What the hell, you are, didn't someone work on this out here? With the peaches?
Oh, the Serpro, yes. They got all of that cleaned up and taken care of. So I'm guessing that the peaches were somewhere, or something like that. Maybe they were.
But it's gone now. It's gone now. It's all cleaned up out there. Actually, Serpro's given us a quote to take care of some odds and ends on building like these, or whatever the trend boards are, the cornice boards or what have you. It's not cornice boards, but.
Sofit?
Sofit, there you go. Sofit's the word I was looking at. The sopits, I think maybe repair the gutters. I think the one on the back is in pretty bad shape.
They need to paint this little hole.
Yeah, it, there's a lot of paint that needs to be... Yeah, we've, we've got upstairs all cleaned up, and we're gonna have it repainted, and we're trying to figure out something to use for it.
You might set the wall up here, with the boss.
Yeah.
If it can be placed.
I don't know. Uh, that's something on my list, and I hope Serpro looks at that and see if they can do something to repair that.
That would be, I thought, on the other board.
I can look in the hole.
Oh, second?
Well, sir.
All in favor say aye. I think you polled. We are adjourned.